Welcome. I'm calling the order of this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, June 13, 2022. I am Select Board Chair Leonard Diggins, and I will now confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Diana Mahan?
Yes.
John Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yes.
Eric Helmoth?
Yes.
Adam Chapdellane?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
Ashley Meyer?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format consistent with an act signed into law on February 15, 2022, that extends certain COVID-19 measures. The act includes an extension until July 15, 2022 of the, oops, oh, sorry, of the, I'm going to go back a phrase, I lost my screen. The act includes an extension until July 15, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The governor's order, which is on the town's website in reference with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as there's reasonable public access that allows the public to follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, it is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participated by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials, also find themselves' website using the notice agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. So let's set forth on tonight's agenda. I'll now turn to the next on the agenda, which is item two, land acknowledgement. I would like to read the land acknowledgement that the board supported last spring at town meeting, and town meeting approved through a resolution which is also contained on the town's website. We acknowledge that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts Tribe, the tribe of indigenous people from whom the colony, province, and the Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts Tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. I will now turn to item three on the agenda. And that is, for approval, garage band on Saturday, June 18, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Wyman Terrace. We have, do we have Thomas Davis? Davison?
We have both Tom, we have both of them if you'd like me to promote them, Mr. Chair. There's Tom, oh, looks like Ashley's working on it, all right. Hi, good evening.
Hello, Ms. Davison. This was Mr. Vrendal. So, want to tell us a little bit about your event?
Sure, I think you said my name there. Ed Vrendal is my name. Arlington resident, just about a year now, and getting active in some local events. I'm a volunteer with the ACAC. I might defer for a moment to Commissioner from the ACAC, Tom Davison. I'm actually assisting him and doing some of the logistical work to help recreate this last issue, the last held 2019 event. We're looking forward to a free community music show here at the Arlington Global Service Station. But Tom, in deference to you being Commissioner, do you want to go first?
Thanks, Ed. Yeah, so briefly, this is an event that we held originally in 2019, Garage Band. It's held at Arlington Service Station next to the Walgreens in East Arlington. The first year we did it, it was very successful. It was the last event after a full day of Porch Fest music. We had a great turnout, about 1,000 people. The problem with having so many people is that the way it was oriented, people were actually spilling out onto Massachusetts Avenue, we were trying to walk along Mass Ave and keeping people up onto the side block. So for this year's event, we wanted to reorient it towards Wyman Terrace, so it's on the side of the gas station and oriented that way. We actually were renting a stage, so the band would be elevated, so people will be constant further back and be able to see them still. So we're asking permission to close off one 75-foot section of Wyman Terrace that's a circular road, so it wouldn't impact any ingress for anyone who lives on the street. The section I'd like to block off from Mass Ave to the end of where the gas station's parking lot is, doesn't block any driveway, so we're asking permission for that. And then the cones, recycling bins, and other that would be required as part of that. Ed did some measurements about the space, and as part of the materials, he submitted some drawings, so I'll turn this back over to Ed. Anything that you'd like to add to that? Thank you for the time.
Welcome.
Thanks again. Thank you to the board for hearing us tonight. The big thing is it's a free concert, and like Tom said, it's the end party for Porch Fest, it's going to be huge. And ACAC and myself were trying to make Arlington fun and vibrant to live in, and this is part of it. The band's really interesting, family-oriented, and it's going to be a nice mix for all age groups. And, but as far as logistics, I do have some experience putting on some shows from where I moved from, and like Tom said, we thought it'd be better to reorient it. And we did do some sketches and things, I'm not sure if the board had a chance to look at all that, but just to repeat, we're looking to take 75 feet on the very, very end, essentially contiguous to the service station. And we did get a comment from the fire chief, who said he was fine with it via email. That seemed to be the biggest thing. We did have the station owner, we met some of the local adjoining property owners, and really closest building is a commercial risk with a commercial I could see with a vacant downstairs. And we intend to be done with the music by 8:00, so we'll be cleaned up and out of there by 8:30. And it's, like I said, it's not a major rock and roll band, it's more of a Cajun, Zidico, diverse type of band, and it's not going to be any really, really loud music in the neighborhood. But just to repeat what Tom said, the sketches and stuff that outlined it, but what's great about Wyman Terrace is the loop street, so it doesn't really block any occupant from getting to their house at all. And the way we sketched that, it doesn't block any driveway, just the way it all lays out, so we're pretty happy with it. The service station's supporting it, they're moving. At first, when I was looking at the site, I was like, how does somebody do a show here? But somehow, Abe from the service station does get all the cars waiting repairs out of there somehow, and he's really excited about running it again. He's supporting it in many ways, both with the place and with some funding for the band and so forth. So we feel like we've got good support. It's going to be a great weather day right now. It's always a big issue with running outdoor events, but the weather looks great. But we'd just like to get whatever the formal procedure is tidied up with you folks, and like Tom said, we envision some cones or some barriers, not physical, but visible markers out by the crosswalk on Mass Ave, on the outside of the crosswalk, and then, again, 75 feet into Wyman, just so cars can't go through. One thing I thought I'd throw in too is, if we could, I'd like to get some temporary no parking signs, just say 5:30, 8:30, so nobody parks in that one 75-foot section. It looks like it's open to parking there from what I can see. And then we'll be taking care of the stage assembly and disassembly and so forth. But the third and last thing for me was, we are renting a stage, we should make it a more professional show for the band, and we did send some vouchers in through ACAC channels, and we're using Cambridge Taylor Rental, because Arlington Taylor didn't have anything in inventory yet. And we just want to be sure that whatever the controller or treasurer process is, is that we can assure the rental company that they're going to get their money. I mean, it's within the budget, it's been approved by ACAC, but it's just a technicality, because I'm sure they'd like to know for sure they're getting their money. That's it for my side, Tom.
Thanks, Ed. And just to that last point, we've already put a purchase order into the Cambridge Taylor Rental site. If there's any questions the board has, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Sure. I'll turn to my colleagues, and I'll ask Mrs. Mahan that when you want to speak, if you could just raise your hand electronically, that'll help, and certainly if you want to go first, me, raise it early, and I'll turn to you first, me. So right now, I'll just look, Mr. Hurd?
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Second?
Second for Mr. Decorsi. Any questions, comments?
Happy to support this. I'm sorry I'll be out of town, because I would love to go hear a band called the Squeezebox Stompers.
They are a lot of fun.
Sounds like a great thing. Thank you for doing this, and thanks for your excellent work on the commission in general. I think this is just one of the many terrific events that you do for the arts in Arlington, and we're always, always happy to see what you think of next.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So did I hear that you said you wanted no parking signs?
If it's an option, yes, just for that 75 feet, I guess, be the east and the west side of Wyman Terrace.
Right, so have you gone about getting those? I mean...
No, I guess, after you vote, I guess the logistical question I have is like, does your DPW drop off cones? How do we actually get the trash cans and recycling bins and cones? In my past, we had these temporary police order, no parking, you know, 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM, that we would stick in a cone, stick or something, and take them down once we're done, and just...
Well, if Board Assistant, okay, Mr. Heim and then Mrs. Meyer. Okay, well, if Board Assistant will tell me we're all set...
I just had a question. It's a, it's a private way, correct?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, if it's not, then we can reach out, if the board approves it, I can reach out to the police department and get no parking signs on either side, if that's what you're looking for?
Yes, just, and just for that one little section, not the entire street, just from Mass Ave, it's, as Ed said, that 75-foot section up to the end of where the parking lot is for the service station. That'd be much appreciated, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, okay, just didn't want to approve it and then throw you out there, and then we don't know what happens next.
If that's appropriate, we would reach out to the parking department and the police department to get signs set up.
Okay, great.
And I don't know, would the DPW bring cones or barriers to block off the end of the street?
Most of the time, we would ask that you block off the street, but we would provide the no parking.
Oh, okay, we can do that. And for the recycle bins and trash bins, I know in the past, the DPW has some temporary, like Plexi plastic ones that are foldable. We could probably pick those up ourselves and return those directly from the DPW. If they're, I don't know if they're currently available, the way the DPW is currently being renovated.
With the approval of the board, I will also reach out to DPW and see if they can provide cones and recycle bins.
Thank you very much.
And I hate to ask this basic question, but APD did sign off on this, right?
We got sign off from Kevin Kelly, Fire Chief. We did not hear anything from the police department.
You didn't hear anything from them?
No.
No.
I'm not sure, we copied certain folks, I'm not, maybe, Tom, you want to go into that?
Yeah, they were listed CCs on this submission to the board. I don't believe that the APD was directly contacted.
Hmm. Well, we can't have a situation where APD isn't aware of this. So, so we're going to have to just make sure that APD knows about this? Yeah, Mr. Hurd?
So I know when we do block party applications, which I just did one recently, that we process them, and because those are done through the Sukwood office, and then they just notify APD when the street's shut down. I think the Sukwood office can just notify the APD that we approved this.
And it looks as though that they did CC the police department. They may not, they're probably aware, but have not got back. So we'll reach out to them.
Fine, then if everyone's fine with that, you'd like to feel we're being responsible about this. And so, so on a motion from Mr. Hurd, and a second from Mr. Decorsi, I think, as I said in the intro, we're doing a roll call vote, so Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Good to have you, people.
Thank you. Bye.
So item number four is acceptance of gifts and/or grants, donations to Arlington Police Department. Mr. Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief. The Arlington Police Department received roughly $200 in, not roughly, exactly $200 in a check donation from an Arlington resident. That specific resident wasn't identified for me, but in order to keep up our ongoing practice of trying to make sure that we're bringing all gifts and donations to the Select Board for approval, both for accounting purposes and to make sure that there's nothing that the board's concerned about, it's brought for your attention tonight for your vote to receive it. Do folks have any questions?
Approval from Mr. Hurd?
Second.
Second from Mr. Helmoth. So, questions, comments, anyone?
Just to be clear, there are no conditions on this gift.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So, and so on a motion from Mr. Hurd, and a second from Mr. Helmoth, you know, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Great. So now on to the consent agenda. We have, for approval, Arlington International Film Festival banners, and that's with April L. Rannick and Alberto Guzman, and reappointments, all terms expire on June 30, 2025, for the Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee, Jack Johnson, Maurice Cabas-Liza, Adam McNeil, Doug Mio Wells, Scott Smith, Christopher Tonkin. Then a request for a contracted drain leak license, DJ Morris Contracting. Then a request for one-day beer and wine license on June 17, 2022, at Robbins Memorial Garden for the Friends of the Robbins Town Garden Party, with Christine Harris. And number nine, request special one-day beer and wine license, June 18, 2022, at Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a private event, Lauren Duddy. And number 10, request special one-day beer and wine license, June 19, 2022, at Jason Russell House for a private event, Brian Burke. So, Mr. Helmoth?
To move approval for the consent agenda, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Helmoth.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Decorsi. Questions, comments? All right, so on a motion from Mr. Helmoth, then a second by Mrs. Decorsi, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. Moving right along. Number 11, for approval, class-two license, Summer Street Auto Care, and 34 Dudley Street with Kenneth Walsh. Is Mr. Walsh with us?
Hello, Mr. Walsh. Good evening. John Leoni here with Ken Walsh, the owner of Summer Street Auto LLC. Ken is, can unmute if he wishes, but Ken's seeking a class-two auto used car sales license for location at his shop, 3436 Dudley Street, for six automobiles. As you can see in the application, he has detailed out where the cars will be placed, and Mr. Ken will speak, these are probably just vehicles that he'll either repair and sell, or pick up and then repair and sell. It's going to be a add-on to his business, not his total business. So if you have any questions, we'd be glad to hear whoever has them.
Thank you, Ms. Leoni. So, any questions, comments, concerns? No? And just Mr. Hurd?
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Second.
Second from Mr. Decorsi, so, all right, so on a motion for approval from Mr. Hurd, and a second from Mr. Decorsi, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins? I'm sorry, Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, attorney Heim.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote, I'm thrown off here. It's a hybrid meeting.
That's okay. So moving on to item number 12, for, well, thank you.
Thank the board.
Yes, you're welcome.
You have nice...
Oops. Sorry, John.
That's good.
Comes off way too quick.
It's a nice evening, so yes, we will, yeah.
You too, Mr. Leoni.
So moving on to number 12, for approval, common victueller license, summer sushi, 474 Mass Ave, Jiang Jing Chen?
All right.
Hi.
Can you...
So, we, she?
Yes, that's me. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Not, not what?
Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah, oh, yes, yes.
Okay, great, well, great. So you want to tell us a little bit about your business?
Yes, well, actually, I, I'm not applicant, I'm an attorney for the applicant, and the applicant is also, so right there, I think that's it, there he is, Mr. Chen. This is basically a common victory license application pending before the board, and we are purchasing, taking over an existing restaurant, so Yousushi, at the address 474 Mass Ave in Arlington. And Mr. Chen is, Mr. Chen is going to be the owner and operator of this restaurant. He has been working with the Board of Health for the permit, establishing permit, and I believe we have received some resignal from several departments of the town, and we are happy here to answer all the questions that the board might have.
Okay, well, thank you for doing business with us, Mr. Chen, or doing business in our town, Mr. Chen. So any questions, comments for my colleagues, Mr. Decorsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'll move approval, Mr. Chen, assuming we vote favorable action, I want to wish you best of luck, and it's, it's nice to see a restaurant or a new retailer going into that block, because it's been a difficult block for the town. So thank you and best of luck.
Mr. Hurd?
Thank you very much.
Also, would like to thank you for choosing Arlington. My office is right about a block down, and I do love sushi, so I'll be looking forward to your grand opening.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so, so can someone help me here? And what is our sister city?
No, I guess...
What was the question, sorry?
Yeah, because I mean, there are so many sushi places now in that part of town, I just kind of wonder if we have more sushi, greater concentration of sushi restaurants, you know, than our sister town, you know? So, I mean, it's wonderful, I mean, it's wonderful, competition's great. I tried to read the menu a little bit, you know, do you have anything with black rice? Any sushi with black rice?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to respond to this question, what type of sushi menu you have?
Well, don't worry, I'm sure it's all good. Look, I'm happy, I'm happy to approve this, and I'm looking forward to trying.
Because of language barrier.
I'm looking forward to trying the place, so...
But I agree with you, it's very competitive, there are a lot of sushi restaurants open everywhere.
Yeah, so you're going to have to be good, and I'm sure you will be, so, so on, I'm seeing you looking, you're also...
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
So, so I asked a question, and I kind of forgot the sequence. I know we have a motion from Mr. Decorsi, and the second is for Mr. Hurd, you know, I did remember before. So with that, Mr. Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe it's Naggerkill, by the way.
Okay.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Chen.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to even business. Take care. So now we move to open forum. So, except in unusual circumstances, any matter present, presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. So, Mr. Chapdellane, anyone in the audience for open forum?
There are no raised hands right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, I mean, so, my first...
Oh, I'm sorry, I, Mr. Carl Wagner just raised his hand.
Okay, great, so, Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
I can, and if you could just hang on for a little bit while I start up a stopwatch here, timing purposes.
I got you.
Great, thank you. All right, yes, Mr. Wagner, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm Carl Wagner of 30 Edge Hill Road. I wanted to congratulate the board on the choice of Adam Chapdellane a long time ago. He's been a great town manager for us, and we are about to see Mr. Chapdellane's departure, and I believe we've seen the director of planning already depart. I just wanted to encourage the volunteers that you are to continue to do great work on the Select Board for us, and please, please, in the process of choosing the future town manager, whether that's one of the existing people in Town Hall, or whether it's somebody else, and in that person's inevitable choice of a director of planning, please remember that the people who live here already, the existing renters and owners, the business people, the residents, really need to come first as the most important stakeholder. We're facing, I believe, a $5 to $7 million structural deficit after the ARPA funds go away, and there is a huge need to right-size town things, town, town government, school budgets, unfortunately, and in general, we really need to see a planning department working for the people who live here, for affordability, for open spaces, for the community that people want to be able to stay in, and the community that should be affordable for people of color, people on fixed incomes, middle-class people to move to. So there's a huge honor to be Select Board. I hope you see that you're doing a great thing for us, but also in choosing the unelected leaders that will represent the voters, the taxpayers, the people who are already here, I ask you in the coming days and weeks to please think of us in your choices as you go forward. And again, congratulations to Mr. Chapdellane, and also to Ms. Rate. I hope that we will have as good leaders in our positions of power soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. And not seeing any more hands, we will move past, thank you, Mr. Hurd, Mr. Helmoth, we will move past this part of the agenda, and on to item number 13, and discussion of the overnight parking pilot. And so, Mr. Decorsi and I have met with Chief Flaherty and Officer Ruto last week, and we were discussing when to hold the forum, and we are aiming for the 22nd, and although I'm going to ask if we could consider maybe doing it on the 23rd, when we meet tomorrow, mainly because the MBTA is having a session regarding the bus network redesign on the 22nd, so we may move that to the 23rd. One thing that became apparent in the discussion is that this is going to be, there's just a lot of elements to this, and, and one big element to it is the permit parking aspect of it. And we weren't thinking really about doing permit parking, but it really seems that you can't have the overnight parking pilot without having a permit parking pilot along with it, because it's so susceptible to abuse without a permit parking pilot, you know, and, and it's going to be a pretty big endeavor, and, and it's, it seems more and more like we, we are going to have to decide if this is something that we want to do, I mean, and so, so, you know, the pilot will more so be in the way we roll it out, as opposed to deciding whether or not we're going to do it. And so I think we, as a board, we really have to decide if that is something that we want to do, and I think we will have the forum saying, okay, we are tentatively thinking about doing this, I'm not asking anyone to commit to doing that, but go to residents saying that this is something that is under serious consideration, and we want to get a sense of how it is, I mean, that we do it, you know, and so get input on how to do it. For example, I mean, do we do parking only on one side of the street in alternate years, you know, things like that, you know? And so I'm going to turn to Mr. Decorsi to ask him if he concurs what I said, and certainly add anything and correct anything that I may have said incorrectly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, no, I concur with what you said. We had a good meeting, and as you said, we're meeting tomorrow again with Chief Flaherty and Officer Ruto. There's a lot of information that was discussed, and a lot of... There's a lot of information that was discussed, and a lot of things that when you think about a pilot or doing something, as you talk about it more, you realize that there are more facets to it than, than you initially, initially realized. And I think the program that's, that's planned, whether it's the twenty-second or twenty-third of this month, um, I'm sure we'll learn from that, too, in terms of what, what input we receive, so that ultimately, we can come back to the Board as a subcommittee with, with some sort of recommendation. But I, um, I encourage, um, people who are interested, who have concerns, or who want to give input to, to look for the, the date of the, um, of the program, that the forum that we have, because we're gonna need that input to, to put something together, um, to bring back before the Board.
So, um, I'm looking to see if Mrs. Mahan might have her hand up. Maybe not yet, you know, so I turn to my colleagues.
That all sounds good to me. No, I think you guys have it under control, and there's a lot of moving parts. That's why I think sometimes the town just votes to keep the overnight parking in place because of, of the moving parts, but we've talked about this for years, and there's a lot of interest in seeing if the town can go in another direction. So, I look forward to what the subcommittee can come up with in conjunction with the comments that you get from the public, and seeing where we can move from there with the parking pilot. So, we'll stay tuned.
Yes, Mr. Helmoth?
Just a question, and I, I'm sure that I missed this. Which month were you talking about doing this?
Oh, that, that at this point is, is not at all decided.
I'm sorry for the, I'm sorry for the.
Oh, for, oh, oh, so that would be this month, I mean, so, so.
Next week.
Yeah, next week, either on Wednesday or Thursday, you know, and we'll, we'll make a decision tomorrow. It'll really depend on whether, we initially set the twenty-second, and if the twenty-third is still available, we'll go for that date, you know? Although, anyone can chime in now. I mean, if anyone who wants to be there, I mean, prefers one of those two dates, I mean, then, then we'll go with that, you know?
Yeah, that, that sounds good to me. Uh, and I, I appreciate the work that the subcommittee is doing, and the thinking. I know what you mean about, about, um, you know, become, it starts to become a game of whack-a-mole, you know, where you, where you, you really, and that's exactly the process we need to go through, is just see what, what flushes out. Um, I'm, I'm glad to hear the thought being given to potentially permitting. I know that that is, uh, an operational and even a budgetary consideration. But it's something that's been on my mind for a while, so I'm glad that we need, that we, I think we should at least give that a careful look, and just, and to understand the pros and the cons of that, because of potential abuses. So, um, just wanted to reinforce that.
Yeah.
Or for that consideration.
Yeah, one thing that's apparent is that we'll have to price that, I mean, and then get, of course, the staff that can handle it, I mean, so it becomes a, a situation where it seems like we will have to do this later, I mean, but as I said, with all of that kind of infrastructure, for lack of a word, better word, put in place, it becomes a change, you know, and so now it's a matter of how do we affect that change in a, in a responsible way. And then part of that is, means getting input from our residents, I mean, and, you know, this is likely to be the first forum, you know, I mean, it's gonna be coming fast, you know? And so, and as people become more aware of it, I think more people want to say things, and we will need to provide a means for people, uh, to do that, because in the end, I find most of the time that even if people don't agree with what you decide to do, if you've given them ample time and ability, opportunity to make their input, I mean, they respect the process, I mean, respect what, what you're doing, you know, so even though they don't agree. Sure.
Um, yeah, I mean, all that sounds exactly right. Um, and one further, further suggestion to, to consider, and I leave the, the decision in your table hands, is following on the forum. I think you're right that that will get attention, and people will think of questions they didn't know they had. Perhaps a public comment mechanism through, uh, a web forum or an email, uh, might, might be a good way to continue some of that input.
Yeah, like an email address other than us five email addresses.
Yeah, just a, just a way to, to centralize, so that it's all, you know, it's all in one place, and, and then we can be sure that when we want to get the body of public comment, we can have that.
That's a great idea. It's a great idea. I had, I had not thought of that, and it'll be easy enough to create, I'm sure, right? So, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out, you know, that's a great idea. So, I see Mr. Chaplaine's hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Just on that point that Mr. Helmoth just made, we, we've used Google Forms or other tools a number of times, especially over the course of the pandemic, to solicit public feedback. I think most recently on the compilation of the ARPA plan. So, if it is something that you and the Board would like to use, we, we could work with the Public Information Officer to put something together like that, and then push it out to the residents.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Chaplaine. And so, so this is just a, a discussion thing, you know, so, Mrs. Mahan, anything you want to say, ask? Nope? Okay. All right, well, we're just, um, discussing it, so no need for, um, anything else at this point. I mean, so we'll move to item number fourteen for discussion, the draft letter to Mass Housing concerning, regarding 1021, 1025 Massachusetts Avenue. Uh, Mr. Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just as a quick refresher, primarily for the public, not really for this Board, since you've seen, uh, higher than, you've seen your fair share of 40B applications and project eligibility or site approval, um, processes in the last couple of years. What's before the Board right now is an invitation for the Board to provide some comment with respect to, um, the majory company's application for site approval and project eligibility for a 40B project for approximately fifty units on a one-acre site, uh, located at 1021, 1020 through 1025 Mass Ave. This is not the same thing as the 40B hearing process, which is a lengthy process involving lots of testimony and evidence, and expert analysis, and back and forth, um, through different, uh, reviews, um, inviting departments to provide formal comment, the public, all that kind of stuff. This is a more narrow, uh, scope of responsibility with respect to deciding whether the Board wants to respond to Mass Housing's invitation to comment on whether or not this project should be eligible for essentially mass housing funding. The scope of the inquiry is really, uh, oriented towards, is the site appropriate for residential development? Is the conceptual design appropriate? So, it's not the fine details yet. They've essentially put together a conceptual, um, project, but it's probably gonna change quite a bit even before they submit the actual comprehensive permit to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is it financially feasible? Do they have site control? It's a much more narrow, uh, set of things. So, you had already received a presentation from this group, who was, uh, uh, good enough to come before the Board in advance of asking for site approval and project eligibility for Mass Housing. These folks also went to the Conservation Commission for a number of working sessions, which is a positive sign that they're, want to solicit feedback from different, um, potential stakeholders before they get too far along in the process and commit to a specific design, or something that wouldn't be feasible from the ConCom's perspective. The Conservation Commission also holds independent regulatory, um, authority with respect to administration of the Wetlands Protection Act, which is separate from the 40B process. It's, it usually takes place afterwards. In theory, it could take place in parallel or before. And, um, they also obviously solicited some feedback from town staff, um, like the Department of Planning and Community Development, our town engineer. So, uh, you received a little while ago from Kelly Lineama and Jenny Rate, um, the former planning director, some memorandum and other information. What I've tried to do here is essentially, based on those prior meetings, uh, my understanding of the Board's general sort of posture towards developments of this nature, what was presented that evening by the, uh, actual, uh, potential 40B applicants. A letter that primarily comments without necessarily saying the Board wholeheartedly endorses this, or the Board opposes project eligibility here, because the nature of the project is, seems to be, and I don't want to put words in the Board's mouth, one of those ones where it's more like the Board would be interested in, you know, the applicants considering these things, and having certain things be especially vetted before the Zoning Board of Appeals, rather than something that says there's no way you could ever have a residential development at this site. It's already a residential use, um, at least in part. Or saying that, um, we're concerned about the conservation elements of the site. They've taken the proactive steps of going before the Conservation Commission. There's a lot of discussion about this urban park idea. They've already started talking about tree removal. So, I think, uh, a lot of the potential concerns that the Board have are, are reflected in this. Um, there's a lot of things that are gleaned from, uh, the planning department, the town engineer, and, uh, the Conservation Commission's letter. The Conservation Commission's letter was particularly helpful, I think, in terms of providing a sort of, uh, table setting for the Board, and how it wants to treat what's probably one of the more sensitive issues in this project, and that's the removal of a fair number of trees. Um, I don't know if the, I would assume, I'll have the Board speak to all those issues, but again, this is about, uh, project eligibility. It's not an actual, uh, weighing in on the permit itself. This Board has always had great, um, respect for the jurisdiction of the Zoning Board of Appeals to, uh, hear and make decisions about 40B cases. And this Board has always been supportive and encouraged that, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals by saying that if there's any resources that are necessary to do testing, to thoroughly scrutinize and vet, uh, vet these projects, that this Board will be supportive in terms of making sure the funding is available and the resources available from town staff to do that. So, if there are any questions about the letter itself, the process, I'm happy to answer them. But I've, I've tried to craft a letter here that basically outlines what is positive about the project, um, as far as most of the feedback that, uh, was garnered at your request, and also what is concerning about the project, and they might want to fine-tune uh, before they submit, uh, a comprehensive permit application to this EPA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. So, so your ask, so the ask from us tonight is a vote of approval of the letter for you to send?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. You don't have to send a letter in, but, um, if you want to have the Select Board put together official comments on the record with respect to project eligibility before Mass Housing, this is the time to do it, and it can be supported by these more detailed memorandum, uh, and I'm sorry, I don't see it in Novus Agenda. I apologize, um, if it, but there was a letter from the town engineer addressing some stormwater, uh, concerns that I would also attach, uh, to your letter, just so it's as comprehensive as possible.
All right, thank you, Mr. Heim. And so I turn to my colleagues. Mr. Hurd? Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, uh, I'd move approval. I appreciate the care that went into this letter. Thank you, Mr. Heim, and, and to all the people who generated the, the source material, we have the Conservation Commission, the, uh, planning department, and, um, town engineer, and I'm sure many others. I'm really happy with the comments, uh, particularly in the areas of environmental impact, environmental sustainability. I was really glad to see, uh, at the very end, this, the strong suggestion that applicant consider pursuing lead approval and using air-source heat pumps and solar panels, because Arlington is committed to a net, net-zero, uh, future, and the only way we get there is to be very careful with new development, um, and do everything we can to strongly encourage and incentivize, um, that. So, you know, I, I'm sure that the ZBA, if this lands with them, you know, we'll, we'll take a similar thing, but certainly want them to know that's our values for the town. So, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of merit in kind of, um, putting this, these points on the public record to frame the discussion that may move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm happy to second that. Um, I think we had a good conversation with the applicants and expressed some of our concerns at that time, and I think Attorney Heim's done a great job, as always, summarizing what we said and making us sound better than we actually did at the meeting. But my, I, I think it's a good project. I, I do like how proactive the applicants are being to work with us. I think it's a good sign of how the applicant will be as they go through the 40B process. I do still have concerns about traffic, but again, I think, given that the applicant has been relatively easy to work with at this point, I think if concerns do come up, we'll be able to address that with them. So, I do think this letter completely and thoroughly summarizes our position that we had on the night of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and I, I also support, uh, approval of the letter. Um, I want to thank Attorney Heim for the work that, that he put in, and, and, uh, again, repeating myself a little, what others have said, but, um, planning department, Conservation Commission in particular, we get some excellent comments from Ms. Chapnick on, on behalf of the, um, Conservation Commission. It's really helpful, and I think consistently with our practice of sending in a comment letter at the project eligibility stage, it, it makes sense to do so, uh, in this case as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mrs. Mahan? All set? Okay, great. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great letter, too, I mean, and I'm fully supportive of sending, sending it, you know, it, there's only, I understand that the town very much supports this, and so it should be in the letter, you know, I'll just say, I mean, for my own sake, I mean, I just think there's too much retail, you know, and so, I, it, and I think retail has a hard time because there's too much retail, and so when we, I understand that we want to have, I mean, more business in town, I mean, I think maybe we should look into different kinds of, of businesses, you know, uh, but, but, like I said, I understand that's the posture of the town, and the letter reflects that, and by no means, I mean, asking to have it removed. It's just my way of going on the record about my concern about, uh, retail in general. So, with that, and on a motion from, um, Mr. Helmoth, and a second by Mr. Hurd, um, to send a letter. Uh, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Decourcy?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great.
Mr. Diggins, all, uh, uh, Mr. Decourcy just sent me a few, uh, he caught a few typos. I appreciate that. I'll make sure to get you a letter for your signature on behalf of the Board first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decourcy. Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
So, um, future Select Board meetings, uh, number fifteen, so, uh, so we have our next meeting on the twenty-seventh, but we have nothing programmed for July and August, and, uh, so I know on the fifteenth, I mean, we should get some ruling from the state about remote meetings, you know, but, but, um, chance, yeah, who knows? Who knows what happens by the fifteenth, you know? Just in case that impacts, I mean, how you think about things, I mean, so.
Mr. Chair, may I just make it clear to everybody? So, the, the legislation providing, uh, the allowance to basically have meetings virtually expires on July fifteenth. So, for public who may be curious about what's happening, um, that could affect the Board's ease of scheduling.
Right. So, so the following Monday after the twenty-seventh is the fourth, so of course we won't do that, and, uh, now, I know that in general, uh, we do one meeting a month in July and August, you know? And my suggestion is going to be that, hey, we do that one meeting a month, but that we also entertain the notion of doing a supplemental meeting where we just deal with minor things, mostly like things that are on the consent agenda and approvals that don't really require, I mean, all of us to deliberate on it. I think it might take the pressure off of that main meeting, and, and we could then devote that meeting to more substantive, uh, matters, and if we are allowed to meet virtually for that, I mean, second, that supplemental meeting, we'll do so, you know, so I put that out there as a possibility, you know? And so, um, when we think about scheduling, and certainly if there isn't enough material to warrant doing that, I mean, we can just scrap that meeting. So, it would be more like, uh, a safety meeting, uh, so, so, um, I put that out there as we think about scheduling, you know?
Just, I mean, understood, but I, I think part of the reason that we, that we go to, and who knows, maybe none of us going away, but generally, we'll throw out dates, and every, almost every week that somebody has a vacation. I think that's why we do the one meeting a week. I mean, my, in the summer meetings, we've never really had much on anyways. There's not too much going on in the summer around here. So, I mean, my preference would be to try to stick with the two meetings, and if we need another one, we can add it, but, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, and the, the whole purpose of that, and I guess part of the, the, the thinking about that supplemental meeting is that it wouldn't require that everyone, uh, be here. In fact, we would schedule, I mean, things that just really don't require, um, everyone to deliberate, so. But I hear you. I hear you, and so, so, but, but as we also think about, I mean, well, I guess, should we do that, let's more easily think about adding, I mean, a meeting. And so, like, if I see the agenda really building up, I mean, in Novus Agenda, you know, uh, it, so that we're looking at perhaps a three-hour, three-and-a-half-hour meeting, I mean, and I see that I can pull off a lot of stuff that doesn't require deliberation into another meeting where we're all not there, just three or four, you know, then I'll ask, I mean, and, and it won't be a surprise, you know, and maybe we'll do it. Maybe we won't. And, uh, I see Mrs. Mahan hand up?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Traditionally, what we do is, um, as Mr. Hurd says and everyone else, but I- but I understand that you're the chair, it's your purview to add another meeting. But it's mostly just common victular or any unforeseen circumstances. So how about if we throw out July, I mean, traditionally, we can do the third week of each month. That really works ideally for the select board office, so July 18th and August 22nd.
Okay. Well, and that would open up the 8th if we really wanted it in August. Yeah, all right, you know. So the 18th of July and the 22nd of August?
Just a note for the board. I will be in Wyoming from the 11th to the 21st. So it'll be hard to reach for that period of time. There's no reason not to have a board meeting because of the town council. And Deputy Town Council Mike Cunningham can be available to respond to anything. So if there's anything that comes up in that period, I'll just make sure to give a reminder at the July meeting that Attorney Cunningham will probably have to make sure that he leads the prep for the meeting.
So even if he did the 11th, we wouldn't have your company? Oh, okay, because that was, that was, that was.
I'll be back on the 22nd. I just won't know what I'm talking about.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think, and this plan sounds fine to me, and, you know, I think, I think your idea of holding open the possibility of adding a utility meeting is appealing if for no other reason than it might help an applicant if there's a time consideration for that. Because, you know, one of the downsides of going monthly is that they have to wait longer for approval. And that may not make a difference in many cases, but in cases where a special permit for, you know, a one day event like we do, you know, I would be open to being one of the members available for such things, you know, if you decide to do that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And just to be transparent, I mean, about my overall agenda, it's just to maybe do some of these utility meetings even when we get back into our fall schedule and we're doing two meetings a month. Because, because, I'll tell you, once we go beyond 10 o'clock, for me, it's just a, it's more challenging than usual. And so I'm thinking if maybe we could bleed off, I mean, some of these utility items, I mean, into a meeting where just three of us are present to go through them. And then it can save, I mean, our main meetings for more deliberation. So that's where I'm thinking. I mean, but, but once again, I mean, I want people to want to do it. I mean, yes, the chair can enforce stuff, but that's not my style by any stretch. And so if there's some resistance, then we might do it. But at least think about it, I mean, and maybe, you know, maybe not appeal now, may appeal with, I mean, some sleep cycles, you know. So, Ms. Mahan?
Sorry, I got on my phone. If we could, Mr. Chairman, could we set at least the first meeting in September?
Sure.
And I don't have a calendar in front of me. I'll leave it to you all. But closer to the first two weeks of September, recognizing primary day and all that. So it has to be the third, but I think we can set one right now, just so we have it.
That makes sense. I mean, so the first available date in September, the first Monday would be the 12th, because the 5th is the first Monday in September. That'll be Labor Day. So the first available for us would be the 12th. And, and, I mean, if you want to set the second one, I'm fine with that, too. I get a little antsy sometimes with September because of, which Jewish holiday is it? Is it, I think it's a Jewish holiday.
The 6th is Rosh Hashanah.
Okay, so that would be the 26th. So we'd need to work around that. I mean, you want to work around it now? You know?
Wednesday meeting that week?
Yeah, that would work.
You're, you're, Mr. Chairman, you go for it.
All right. So?
28.
28? Okay. All right. Yeah, 28. All right.
We'll have to thank our former colleague, Mr. Dunn, for introducing the notion of a Wednesday meeting. I think prior to Mr. Dunn, no such thing existed.
What did you do then?
I think we were scheduling one time, and he was like, why don't we just do a Wednesday?
And you had never done Wednesdays before then?
No, I think it was always Mondays.
All right.
I believe he was also a strong advocate for summer catchable.
Yes, he was.
And we thank him for that.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, folks. I mean, so we have three months of meetings planned. And it makes me excited, you know, because I kind of look forward to these. So, but then I like the town meeting, too. So anyways, we're on to correspondence received. So we have trucking concerns on Appleton Street from Terry Proctor and Town Manager position from Beth Malopchek. Comments regarding parking study analysis, Phil Goth, Eelsco Chair, and crosswalk on Summer Street at Victoria Road, Daniel Amstutz, Senior Transportation Planner.
I'll move receipt of 16 and refer to the town manager. Move receipt of 17. Move receipt of 18 and move receipt of 19 and refer to the town manager.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Adam?
Mr. Chairman, just one requested change to that would be, Mr. Amstutz specifically was asking the board to refer number 19 to TAC. They're anticipating it, and they'd like to work on it if you don't mind doing so.
So amended.
Thank you.
So 19 to TAC, you said?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so. So what I'd like to do is send 18 to TAC and AVAC. All right. So, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just kind of an ancillary comment. Since so many of these are referrals to TAC, I'd like to suggest, we had talked about earlier in the year, following up with TAC to get a sense for their bandwidth and turnaround time. I know we throw a lot of things at them, and they work really hard, and we are really fortunate to have them. But I think a number of the consensus of the board at the time seemed to be that we need to find a way to, you know, work with them to get a better information loop.
Right.
And report back to where they were. And I think that, you know, we communicated that request. So if I could ask the chair or someone you designate to follow up with that. As we keep adding more referrals to them, it just comes to mind.
Right.
And I wanted to take the opportunity to mention that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I definitely intend to follow through on that. I mean, next meeting, we're going to talk about assignments, you know. So with a motion, I mean, to handle correspondence received as described by Mr. Hurd and amended by me, and a second by Mr. Hellmuth, you know, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Hellmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
And so now we move to item number 20. And so it's that time, you know. And this is one case where I don't have anything written out, you know. I will on Friday. It's a hard one, you know, because we've done so much, Mr. Chaplin. I tried not to make these things about me, you know. But in this case, I mean, as a member of the select board, and your impact on my ability to understand and learn, and just enjoy the role more, you know. I mean, as I said, the reason when I was asked to run for this, I mean, and then I thought about why I would, is that I like learning things. I mean, I like working on hard problems, and I like collaborating with people. And through you, I've learned a lot, you know. And it's been really wonderful collaborating with you and figuring stuff out. And ultimately, you know, I won't say you were a therapist, you know, but I certainly felt that I could ask you anything without the least amount of embarrassment about the level of sophistication or simplicity of the question. And then I could ask you again sometimes if I couldn't quite remember the answer from a few months ago. And that's been invaluable. And I know how much you care about the town, and I'll save other stuff, I mean, regarding the town in general for Friday. But I really want to express my deep appreciation for all that you have done for me as a member of the board. And I, I know that you have done a lot of things for the board in general, because I know how much you really care about the town. And from my discussions with you, and because I had such frequent discussions with you, you really get to kind of know a person through those discussions. And you know when someone's being sincere. I mean, there's just patterns of behavior and patterns of language. And so, so thank you very much. You know, I'm really happy for you in what I see you're about to do. And so it's going to be a goodbye with respect to your being a part of these meetings, but by no means is it going to be a goodbye for me with respect to keeping in touch, because I generally keep in touch, I mean, and I have a lot of respect for you as I tend to do when I perceive someone who knows a lot more than I do. I'm really drawn to that. So I'm going to be in touch, looking for help on various things regarding Arlington and the region. So thank you very much. And no one else has to speak, you know, but if you want to, here's a chance. So, Mr. Hellmuth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be out of town at the end of the week, so unable to attend the party Friday morning. So, but I will not try to make up for all of that with a long speech now. I'll rely on my colleagues to fill in, fill in the gaps. But Adam, you know, residents of Arlington are grateful to you for 12 fantastic years, 10 of them as town manager. I have no doubt that you leave the town a better place than it was before. And I also know that that's because not only of your efforts, but the efforts of the tremendous team that you have built, that you have proven yourself to be an outstanding manager of people who are loyal to the town and to its residents and care about that. And I think that is an outstanding legacy. The many, many people that you have worked with, the community volunteers and the residents, your availability, your honesty, your transparency, your willingness to engage anybody who wants to contribute or has a fair criticism, I think is also another credit and a legacy that will live on. And I think your vision in so many areas has been such a benefit to the town. Two areas that really speak to me personally, I care about, and I know that you do, is the area of sustainability and efficiency. You have worked really hard and made Arlington a leader in environmental sustainability and in a way that is the envy of the Commonwealth and I think is another legacy that we will treasure. And the areas of diversity, equity and inclusion. I think that you have, along with those of us in the government, have really led the way and engaged residents honestly to walk the talk. And have taken action, have made specific investments that will make us accountable and always listening and never resting on our laurels in those areas, because there's a lot we can do. And I think that that is a value of yours that will also endure. There are many other, and I'm not going to indulge in a catalog, but I just wanted to call out a couple of things that I often think about and will look back upon for what you have done with your team here. So thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and Adam, I want to thank you for your 12 years of service to the town and 10 as town manager. And we've had a relationship, we've known each other for a long time through my years on finance committee. And I will say, when you first got the job as town manager, you're only 32 years old, and people say, okay, how's he going to grow into this job? Or how's he going to do in this job? And right from day one, you knocked it out of the park. And whether it was coming to finance committee meetings and demonstrating your breadth of knowledge, more particularly the first couple of years, how you represented the board and the town manager's office and town departments at town meeting. And that's one thing we've missed these past couple of years, because those first few years, that's where you really shown your knowledge and just the breadth of, and depth of experience that you had gained in a really short period of time. And it was something that as town meeting members, we really looked forward to the answers and to learning during that time period. And for me, this past year as chair, you and I worked very closely. And it was one of the best experiences I had as a, as a member of the board, because we would challenge each other. I would challenge you to be a better manager. You challenged me to be a better select board member. But the other thing was the collaboration, because there would be meetings that we would be going to, and we'd talk about, should we do it this way or that way? And getting through that process, we often got to what I think was the right order. And we didn't always agree on everything. But when we disagreed, we talked it out and we got to a place. And that's the part I'm really going to miss, and I really appreciated, you know, with the experience with you. And we're going to learn shortly what your next step is. And I think at this point in your life, I think it's a really good, positive step for you. And I wish you all the best in the future.
Mr. Hurd?
Well, there are a couple of tough follow-ups. But I do just want to thank you for your years of service to the town. I think Mr. Hellmuth just touched on this, and Mr. DeCoursey as well. But I think when I look back at your tenure as town manager, what strikes me most is the thought of regional leader. The town of Arlington is a regional leader in climate resilience. The town of Arlington is regional leader in how we think about our streets and traffic concerns. And I think that's, that falls right on your doorstep as a leader of the town, that, and it's how you inspire the people that work for you. I know you have the respect of every town employee, department head, all the way down to, you know, I don't want to come up with something that offends somebody. But every town employee loves working for you. I know everyone was sad to hear that you were moving on, but we certainly have, you know, respect your desire to kind of see what's next. Town government can wear on you. And I'm sure it's, there's not too many town managers that sit in the seat for 30 years anymore, because, you know, you can, there's a lot of access. And it's, you don't always get the praise that you deserve. So I'm excited for you. We are certainly sad to see you go. And the town will be worse off without you at the helm. But we certainly will stay in touch and keep apprised of your future plans. So, thank you.
And Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My colleagues have pretty much summed it up. Yes, I have the honor, although if you asked the town manager, we might have a different word to describe it, of working with the manager the longest. I've always appreciated your honesty, your breadth of knowledge. You know, it was sort of a new thing for me, serving on the board, then Board of Selectmen, now select board, to have that instant access to information, literally at every meeting, coming from when I first got on the board to that. And the fact that you also, that wasn't just special treatment for members of the select board. That's certainly how you have represented the town and the town manager's office for the rest of the community, including with the businesses. I know, you know, I'm trying to think of something different than what my colleagues have said, and there'll be more on Friday, but I know especially through COVID, the local businesses, you know, mom and pops, sometimes just mom or man or woman, they really were able to stick it out in Arlington because of the innovation you showed, you know, through your department heads, and really, you know, doing something that had never been charted before. So I appreciate that. And also, I know you and I have always had ongoing conversations about, none of us could do the job we do without our families and our family support. And I do appreciate and respect that for the job of town manager and now what you're moving on to in the future. Your family plays an important part in that. And so, besides, you know, recharging and looking at perhaps a different career path, also keeping your family in mind is very important. So, I wish you nothing but success, good health. And I think we all have an idea where you might be. So, if you think you're gonna get away from us, especially me, you know, I'm gonna accidentally bump into you in some hallway in some city close by. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. That's great. So, we are...
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course.
I don't think I'll get another opportunity. Without conflating myself with board members or their wisdom and eloquence, I'd just love to share something from the perspective of a lot of Town Staff, which is that from so many of us, in our perspective, Adam has been just a sterling example of what the term "civil servant" is meant to embody. It's a term that has sometimes lost its meaning in a more cynical age than the one in which it was born in. But in consensus and in conflict, I think so many of us have valued and respected the leadership and the way in which Adam worked so hard to represent an entire community of almost 45,000 people, the passion and perspective of five Board Members and 252 Town Meeting Members, as well as the other public servants who have enjoyed so much working with and for you, Adam. It's, as Mrs. Mahan put, it's truly been an honor. And from a Town Council to a Town Manager, I will miss you very much and have very much appreciated your leadership and being able to work for you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. So, Ms. Meyer? Okay, fine, no problem, no problem, no, no.
We got Adam and we'll miss you.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Yes?
And then I wonder if the Town Manager would want to make any remarks?
Sure, Mr. Chaplin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief as a, you know, it's awkward to receive praise. Appreciate, very much appreciate, but awkward to even respond. But I guess I'll start with saying, speaking to Mrs. Mahan's points about family. You might see a seven-year-old's head bouncing around behind me on camera. But, you know, I've been thinking a lot about what I would say at a meeting tonight and what I might say on Friday, you know, officially leaving. And some of the thoughts that have come to mind are that, you know, when I think about it over a period of time, 12 years is, you know, a little bit more than a quarter of my life. And 12 years is more than half of my professional, like, adult working life. So, it really has been a significant amount of time and really an incredibly happy time working here in Arlington. The job is, as we all know, incredibly challenging, but it's incredibly fulfilling. And then on that personal side, you know, coming to Arlington married but without children and as Deputy Manager and then becoming Manager and starting a family in Arlington, you know, a lot of great things, part and parcel to this job, have happened while I've been here. And there are things that will always be with me and stick with me for the rest of my life. And I think that overall, though, the thing I keep coming back to as I think about the time that I will have spent working here ties in with what a number of you have said. And that is, the team of people, both staff and volunteers that I've had the opportunity to work with have just been absolutely extraordinary. And I feel as though I've created bonds with people that I will hopefully carry on for the rest of my life. And I hope that is the case. I hope, you know, collectively, we can all find the right way to keep in touch. I'm not changing my phone number, Mrs. Mahan. So, I'll keep you in my contacts, so I'll know if it's you looking for me. But, you know, one of the funny things about this job, I guess, or any executive or managerial level job, is that transition from being a doer to being a manager and understanding that, you know, you don't do things alone. And in fact, if you're doing your job well, you are doing things alone. You're enabling other people to do things, enabling other people to excel. So, I do, I do take a lot of pride, or I just really appreciate when I am complimented in that manner, because it's not, I don't know that it's any of our sort of like default mindset of understanding that your role is not necessarily to do anything but to help others do. And I hope that can be something that my time here is remembered by. The last thing I'll say, as several members alluded to, I haven't talked about it publicly, I've shared it with people one-on-one, and it'll become more public later this week. But I am gonna be starting the new role in September. So, my wish when I made this decision back in March is coming true, that I'll be able to take a little time over the summer. And then in September, I'm gonna start as Deputy Director of a small nonprofit called the Boston Green Ribbon Commission that convenes the City of Boston and large employers, the hospitals, the universities, cultural institutions, to meet the city's climate goals by 2050. So, I know at the Board, I know a lot of the community knows, climate-related issues are very close to my heart, both personally and professionally. So, it'll be a big change, but it's one that I'm excited about and hope it will, you know, marry things that I'm both personally and professionally passionate about. So, with that, thank you a thousand times to the Board for the opportunity to have worked in this capacity, to work with all of you, to work with volunteers, to work with staff. And thank you for the opportunity to have achieved all that we have achieved together. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. So, with that, we'll move on to new business. And Ms. Meyer?
No new business.
Mr. Heim?
No new business, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Heluth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one item of new business. And again, I hate to be out of town to miss this, but this coming Saturday, the Arlington Reservoir Grand Opening for the Town Calendar at ArlingtonMA.gov at 10:00 AM. And I hope that someone or another of my colleagues might be able to go. This is a tremendous accomplishment and celebration of a $4 to $5 million project over a number of years. I got familiar, well-familiar with it in my days with the CPA Committee when we contributed to the funding. But I think our Recreation, Department of Recreation Commission, our Recreation Director, and partners and contractors have managed this process in an outstanding way. I am frequently hearing comments from residents about how well it turned out, how much vastly improved the path is, how beautiful the playground is, even the parking lot and the beach and just everything. And I have enjoyed, I enjoy it myself. I've taken many, many happy walks there since that was done. So, I would encourage residents to go to the party on Saturday and to go to the rez. It's tremendous. There's a brand-new connector, part of that project, to Lexington Community Farm next door, so you can extend your trip and go back and see some vegetables and alpacas while you're at it. So, enjoy.
Mrs. Corsi?
No new business.
Mr. Hurd?
I do have that on my calendar. And I'm excited for the rez, not to reiterate, but it, just driving by compared to what it used to be, the beach and grass, I think it will be great for the kids. And then I'm also looking forward to Port Fest on Saturday, too. Just because that, we haven't had that for a few years, and it's always a good time for Town Residents to get out and see each other. So, that's it.
All right. So, new business for me, it's not gonna be fun stuff, it's gonna be more work, you know? But hey, for some of us, it's more fun, you know? So, I just want to say that one thing that I had been thinking about doing even before Town Meeting was working on, thinking through how we deal with resolutions, you know? And that actually came up when Mr. Fisher talked to us about surveillance, you know, face surveillance, you know? We recommended that he make that into resolution, you know? And at that point, I had, I shifted my feelings about resolutions and thought, we really need to figure out how it is that we kind of formally, we take what comes out of resolutions and try to make it into transparent policy, you know? And so, one of the things I wanted to do was not only look at that resolution for this year and other resolutions this year, but maybe go back a number of years, you know? And so, I'm thinking about doing that. And that kind of ties into one thing we didn't do today, but will do tomorrow, next week, I'm sorry, on the 27th, is set a goals meeting, you know? And so, we'll think about when we do that in July, August. And Mrs. Mahan had actually suggested, maybe, reminded me to do that, and I forgot to do it tonight, you know? And I see Mrs. Mahan hand go up. So, I'll stop and take her hand and then do my next two items. Mrs. Mahan? If you're talking, I'm not hearing you.
Sorry, the phone thing. I just have two quick new business. Do you want to finish yours and then I'll do mine?
Yeah, why don't you, I'm sorry, I skipped you. You go ahead and do yours, you know, and then I'll finish up my last two. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. I actually want to make the Town Manager do one more thing before he leaves. Actually, two more things. One is the federal funding that Kathleen Clark, that Mr. Chaplin, you know, informed the Board of, that I guess Arlington is sort of the overseer of those funds. And I know Representative Chiccolo, I'm gonna say her name right, Michelle, has put in a request for some of those fundings to go towards the town of Lexington leaf blower program, which I don't know, it was my understanding that the funding that Congresswoman Clark got was more for wetlands, flooding issues, climate control issues, things like that. Although I think Representative Chicolo was trying to say it's a climate control request because it would go towards the purchase of non-gas-powered leaf blowers or something. But anyway, before you go, and if you sent this, I apologize, I just had missed it. If you could, I believe it's $350,000, I'm not sure. If you could just send the Board sort of what the allocation is, what it's designed for, recognizing anybody can put a request in, what oversight role the town of Arlington has and who that is. Is it the Town Manager, the Town Manager in the Planning Department, Town Manager and something else? And then to that end, I'd like to put a request in, perhaps through that funding. If not, if we could please find it somewhere else. I know we've all been talking about the ALYCE. EPA recently brought Department of Conservation and Recreation and the DCR informed the Save the ALYCE Brook Group that, who submitted a proposal, that DCR has selected their proposal, which is to update, which is much needed, the 20-year-old master, ALYCE Master Plan in order to move forward. And DCR has indicated that they will deploy to Arlington a two-to-one matching grant. And I'll send this information to the Town Manager, as well as I'll send it to the Select Board Office to forward to my colleagues as an FYI, if you don't already have it. But DCR presented Save the ALYCE with a cost of $75,000 and said that if the town possibly from, they suggested federal, existed federal funding, perhaps, which is federal funding, Congresswoman Clark's allocation, if the town can come up with the 25, they'll match it for 50, which would fund what they estimate they need for a $75,000 flooding, which would focus on the ALYCE Brook flood control and water quality improvements, as well as the construction of a wetland and floodwater spill over at the Cats Hill Marsh, which is between the Brook and the Bike Path and Dornike Street, which is vastly needed. Somebody's gonna have to take that on anyway. I will say that I think the reason the DCR is really moving ahead on this and appearing to be proactive, because people know, most of you probably won't, but Dan just goes, ten shivers down my back. But I think where they were included with the EPA, not only notifying MWR, Cambridge and Sunwell, they also notified DCR. So, I think this isn't a study to do a study, because that drives me crazy. This is something that they need to do. So, what I'd like to do is submit this to you, Mr. Chaplin, Adam, if I could send this request to you. I think DCR has to do it anyways. And if you think the $25,000 is not a viable expense, then I'll be guided by that. But like, if you think EPA is gonna tell me, you have to do this study anyways, you're gonna have to find the whole 75. But if you could really look this over and try to find a way. If you think it's feasible, I definitely want to see this 20-year ALYCE Master Plan study on the points I brought up and the points I won that are contained in the email. But I'd really like to get this done. And I'm gonna forward the contact names beside Chris Mannison. There's another person from the group, I believe her last name is Greer, who's really been overseeing this, with somebody from Concom. So, and that's my new business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I should have raised my hand sooner.
No problem, in fact, if I'd been sharper. I mean, I had a sequence going on here, and you were next, you know? So, sorry about that, my apologies. And so, the next two items for me is I am going to do committees in the next meeting. So, I'll ask Ms. Meyer to send the list around. If there are anything you want to change, you know, or things that you definitely want to keep, you know, by all means, let me know. And the last thing is, really committed to working with ARB more on housing, you know? So, I plan to have some conversations with Ms. Dunsbury, you know, and try and set up something, you know, maybe subcommittee, you know, two members from this committee, from this Board, and two members from that Board, working together. Yes, Mr. Hurd?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just gonna say, right before COVID, we had our joint meeting with the ARB. And we had a whole plan of, I'm sure Mr. Chaplin can provide that for you, but of, like, an outline of a year and a half that we're gonna work together. So, it would be good to maybe have another joint meeting and then kind of jump back into that outline now that we're kind of reaching out.
Yeah, well, thanks for...
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in on you.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine.
That's to come in, sometimes they go out.
Yeah, no, no, it's totally fine, totally fine, you know? And so, and thanks for making me aware of that outline, you know? And I'll work with Mr. Chaplin to get that, you know? And then see what Ms. Dunsbury has in mind. But certainly want to do, I mean, try and build some momentum. And this summer, we probably won't have a joint meeting this summer. Maybe plan something for September. Want to really hit the fall rolling and try, just have a plan, you know, so that we can do something more meaningful, you know, in the next Town Meeting. Not that this Town Meeting wasn't meaningful, but we could do more, you know? So, that's my new business, you know? And so, with that, we're gonna want to head into an executive session, you know? So, Mr. Heluth? You practiced, you learned?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I might need some help on this.
Okay.
I haven't been freshly coached by our expert vice chair. So, Mr. Chair, I move that the Board adjourn to executive session for the purposes of negotiations with non-union personnel. How do I go over there that I forget? But namely, Mr. Sandy Poole, for the position of Deputy Town Manager. Mrs. Mahan, how'd I do? Thank you.
No, I was gonna thank him when you done, sorry.
Just need to state whether we'll come back into open session or adjourn from executive session.
Thank you, and that we adjourn from the executive session.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I guess, I guess my only concern this time is that I'm wondering if we might want to, no, we're not gonna finish up tonight. I was just thinking, maybe, there might be a chance that we finish, and then we come back out. But we won't, so, okay, great. So, on a motion from Mr. Heluth, we need to go into the executive session. And a second from Mrs. Mahan, you know, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Heluth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Jam his vote, we're now in executive session.